Mayor Protim, McCullough?
Yes.
Commissioner Opel?
Here.
Commissioner Motta?
Here.
Commissioner Mitten?
Here.
Mayor Protim, we have four commissioners present. The quorum of three is met.
Thank you very much. Would you join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We will do the proclamations. We'll start with the one for physician's assistance. Have we got Vivian Guera and Sarah Borjas?
Borjas.
Borjas? Thank you. This is about physicians' assistance. There's too many S's.
PAs.
And, you know, you guys really are important. And I'm really pleased that we've realized that physician's assistance can do a lot of things that we don't have to have an M.D. for.
We are the mini doctors.
Yeah. I was on the state board for emergency services. And I remember, this is a long time ago. I remember we talked about this. Could we, because we had people out in St. John's, and, you know, and could we have a P.A.? Or, you know, and we decided we could.
Yes.
Okay. Whereas, quality, cost-effective, and accessible patient-centered health care provided by a physician's assistance contributes to the well-being and quality of life of all patients in Manhattan, Kansas. And PAs are academically and clinically-prepared medical professionals who diagnose illness, develop and manage treatment plans, and often serve as a patient's principal health care provider. And PAs are often the first point of contact for many patients and play a vital role in helping them understand their medical needs and empower them to become effective advocates for their own health. And they are a valuable asset to the medical team. PAs enhance the delivery of high-quality health care for patients, often in medically underserved rural areas. And PAs have earned the respect of the general public for their dedication and contributions to people's lives and for their commitment to team-based care. And they ensure delivery of effective and efficient health care services. Now, therefore, Susan Adamcheck, Mayor of the City of Manhattan, does proclaim October 6th through 12th as National Physician's Assistant Week throughout Manhattan and encourage all our residents to recognize PAs for the significant impact they have made and continue to make in our health care as a critical part of the health care team. Would you like to say a few words?
Sure. Me first?
Sure.
Because I'm the shortest one, so I have to do it first. All right, so my name is Dr. Vivian Givara. I am the interim program director right now of our, the K-State University PA program. And this is Ms. Sarah Borja. She is the president of the PA Student Society. So, we would like to thank the city commission officials and all of you here that are, you know, sitting there and everybody around here for your support to the PA program. So, this is our fourth time, fourth year, to come in here as proclaimed as the PA, you know, for the PA community. So, we have, 6 through 12 is the PA Week. It's the National PA Week for, that's why we are celebrating this PA Week next week with our students. So, we have our Kappa, which is the association, the Kansas Association of Physician Assistance that we have, oh, association. Kansas, Kansas, yeah, so many S's. But, you know, we have that, what do you call this? We have the conference during that week. No, it's in Wichita. Last year, it was here in Manhattan. Yeah, so.
Let those people stay in our hotel.
Yes, I know. We were going to alternate that. So, Wichita, and then here, and then some other places. But, we asked them last year that, you know, can you do it in Manhattan? Because we have a few, a lot of PAs there that cannot go to Wichita. It's a two-hour drive. And then they can come over here. And then they can, you know, they can increase the number of the members of Kappa. So, we just want to thank everyone in the commission for, you know, giving us again the opportunity for this, getting us our.
Next year.
Yeah, thank you. Would you like to say something?
As a student?
As a student, I'd like to thank Manhattan for supporting the university and for helping to bring the physician assistant program to Manhattan and help grow the profession throughout the entire state.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Kathy Ray, and how do I do this? Taychel? Taychel? Great. Bear with me. I'd like to proclaim, whereas domestic violence is a widespread public health problem impacting all demographics of Manhattan, Kansas, and perpetrators of domestic violence use illegal and legal behaviors and tactics that undermine the victim's sense of self, free will, and safety. And domestic violence can have profound lifelong impacts on the victim's health, opportunity, and well-being, and also the victim's families. And, yeah, the circle. One in four women and one in seven men in the United States have experienced sexual violence, physical violence, or stalking by an intimate partner. And the Kansas Bureau of Investigation reports one domestic violence murder occurs every 10 days, 10 hours, and 17 minutes in Kansas. And across the United States, many leaders and organizations have displayed their commitment to ending domestic violence. And we must devote ourselves to protect the vulnerable and at-risk members of our community. So, we remind victims of domestic violence that they're not alone and that free and confidential services are available by calling the Crisis Center. And that's at 1-800-727-2785, or texting HEAL, H-E-L, to 847411, or the Safe Line, Kansas Help Line, at 1-888-363-2287, and texting to SAFE, but that's the same number, right, as the HEAL?
It's 8, yep, 847.
84711.
Same service provider.
Yeah, okay. Now, therefore, Susan Adamcheck, Mayor of the City of Manhattan, proclaims October 2024 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Now, I want to see the PAs back here next to you. I want to see you guys back here.
Well, I wish we didn't have to have jobs.
In Manhattan. And I urge all citizens to become more aware of domestic violence and the services available for victims. Kathy, you want to say a few words?
Sure, I'll just say a few comments. Thank you for recognizing October as Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Some national and Kansas statistics were provided. But last year, I just want to share what the Crisis Center served, so that, here in Manhattan, so that you get a good idea of what that's like in our own community. So, last state fiscal year, state fiscal year 2024, we answered 1,888 calls on our 24/7 crisis helplines. We now have the texting features to reach more people with that service. We provided 9,150 bed nights in our safe shelter in one year. And that's in a confidential location here in Manhattan. We co-responded to 446 domestic violence law enforcement calls with the Riley County Police Department. And we provided 63 community awareness presentation and training events. So, these statistics are a stark reminder that it does affect us all, whether that's us directly, our friends, our neighbors. These are our community members and our coworkers and our loved ones. And so, we're here tonight to remind everyone that there is help available at the Crisis Center. We're a 24/7 nonprofit organization. All of our services are completely free and confidential. So, please reach out if you or you know someone who needs help. Thank you.
And as we move through the remainder of October, I know we just began, we will ask that you, we extend our opportunity to you all to continue to support the Crisis Center, our families, the victims and survivors that we serve and continue to support us so we can continue to support them.
Thank you.
Okay. We have public comments. And there are a couple on this list that have signed up that want to talk about the cemetery. So, I think we'll save those comments for when we get to the cemeteries, if that's right. Yeah, okay. So, Gary, I think you're up. Thank you.
Good evening, Commissioners. As you know, my name is Gary Oles. I live at 3308 Frontier Circle. If you could set that, what I gave you aside just a second and listen to what I'm going to say. Normally, I speak impromptu, but tonight I thought it was important enough to write this down. So, hopefully, I'll be under my 4 minutes and 45 seconds. I hope you all agree with me that words matter, truth matters, transparency matters, and elections, as well as appointments, matter. The R and R and 2025 budget hearings were held on September 9th? No, 3rd, 3rd, I think it was. You, Commissioner McCullough, erred when you opened the R and R and public and budget hearings and asked for, and I quote, "public comment." The public should have been told by you, as Mayor Protim, that the purpose of these hearings are for elected officials to hear and answer to the taxpayer objections relating to the proposed use of all funds, the amount of ad valorem tax, and the revenue-neutral rate. And you can see that in the top paragraph that I underlined. That was the purpose of those two hearings. That did not happen. Therefore, the R and R hearing is for the public to be heard by the commission and answer objections about raising property taxes above what the city set in 2024, not how the money would be spent, nor discussing among yourselves where money could be moved from one fund to another to lower property taxes. The 2025 budget hearing, which was obviously right after the R and R hearing, is for the public to be heard, once again, by the commission to answer objections on how and where the money should be spent. Those are two different hearings for two completely different purposes. That would have been the transparent thing to say to the public. Unfortunately, the nine that spoke during the R and R hearing, and I watched that three times, were unaware of the difference between public comments and these public hearings. There is a significant difference. After the R and R hearing closed, you almost acted on Commissioner Motta's suggestion for a bit of property tax relief by funding outsized agencies at the same amount as 2024, thus lowering the mill by about one-half mill. What Commissioner Motta proposed was reasonable, but the other four decided otherwise. When you had a second chance during the 2025 budget hearing to do the same, but the vote was approved and the proposed 2025 budget passed 3 to 2, a decision that may have consequences in the 2026 election. You'll have one more opportunity to redeem yourself if you so choose in the 2026 budget year. On a side note, which is the document that I gave you, or documents, did any of you realize that 2.068 million was being removed from the debt service for 2024 into 2025? And that the 2024, from 2024 to 2025, 4.342 million was being dumped into it? I'm not sure the public's aware of that, even though they could see the document if they took the paper or went online. I share this with you in order that the 2026 R and R and budget hearings will be explained to the public according to the state law. As I mentioned a month ago, I was out of town, so I was not able to attend. And unless someone else in my family gets married, which there are no others, well, that's not true, I plan to be here in 2026. And I also plan to be here, just so you know, as a heads-up, in two weeks during public comment to express my concerns, once again, about the seats on the Riley County Law Board. We need to go back to what it was a very long time ago where all members are elected officials. Because right now, the R and R hearing was pointless with regards to Riley County Board because you had no choice but to pass that. It was given to you. And you don't have all elected officials, so you cannot be removed by election.
Thank you, Gary.
Thank you.
I've got Darian. So, what are we doing with this?
Hi. Hi, my name is Darian Smith Gettle, and I live at 2132 Prairie Lee Place here in Manhattan. I'm here today because I don't think we've ever met. You see, I'm what most people would consider the average citizen. I vote, I pay my taxes, and I contribute to our community. I work a mid-level, blue-collar job, can be found at City Park on the weekends, and have been known to have a beer or two at Annie Mae's when finances allow. I'm just like you, kind of. Like you, I own a home in this community, a $12,000 two-bedroom townhome in a food desert just off Tuttle Creek, well within city limits. Unlike you, I had to disclose my address to everyone present and on the Internet in order for my words today to have credibility. Like you, I am a veteran of the United States Army. Unlike you, I was disabled by my military service and found myself in a community that provides no services specific to veterans in terms of home-buying assistance, transportation to medical appointments, or social gatherings with those similarly affected. Like you, I had a career in health care. Unlike you, mine was much more recent. And hands-on. As an emergency room paramedic during the first wave of COVID, I was separated from my family for 15 incredibly-long months in service to my country during an unprecedented and preventable pandemic. I then went on to earn a master's degree in health education last year. One could say that makes me a tad bit more up-to-date on recent research, especially considering the post-pandemic society we live in. Unlike you, by scientific standards, I am in fact qualified to speak on matters of community health. Like you, I have a vested interest in the socioeconomic success of Manhattan. Unlike you, I work for a small local business and am painfully aware of the downward trend our economy has been taking. And rather than ignoring the trend, have restructured the business in order to meet the needs of our employees and consumers in these difficult times. Same, same, but different, right? As it stands today, I feel incredibly underrepresented by the composition of this commission, the decisions you make, and the direction which you are trying to drive my beloved city. While it isn't my place or desire to speak for everyone, I am here today to let you know that there are other voices out there, voices that are becoming increasingly louder by the day, voices that deserve, nay, have the right to be heard. You're allowed to pretend that you're making decisions for the people. Bury your heads in the sand if you like. That's a choice you're allowed to make. Just know that we, the people, are paying attention.
Jessica?
Jessica Winters, 408 Houston Street has been my legal address for well over a year. It is on my driver's license, tax documents, banking and insurance documents, and on my voter and vehicle registration. If you would like me to explain why that is the case, I will be glad to inform you. However, if this commission chooses to openly violate my First Amendment rights, as a citizen of Manhattan, I will be left with no other choice but to pursue this through the courts. Which would you prefer?
Jessica, just tell us what you have to say.
Last year, my partner sold her house, and we bought an RV together. This wasn't a split-second decision or a midlife crisis. It was an international lifestyle shift to downsize and to learn how little we could live with. That path came with certain drawbacks. One was losing the stability that came with owning a house and having a mailbox. We contacted the county, state, and federal government to ask them what they wanted us to do. And this arrangement, it turns out, is not as uncommon as the commission seems to believe. Many people are simplifying their lifestyles by choice or because of our spiraling housing crisis. The answer was unanimous. From every office we contacted, don't use a PO box and don't use the park where you're staying. As a small-business owner, we were supposed to use our business address at 408 Houston Street because that is the easiest way to get ahold of us. I don't and haven't used my address to skirt the rules. I use it so I am playing by the same rules as every other citizen. As I feel it's necessary to answer the baseless accusations the lowercase m mayor hurled at me during the last open meeting, I will say this. I have not only lived in Manhattan for a decade now, the address for the park where I live at is also a Manhattan address. My family has been here for three generations. My grandmother and my grandfather grew up here and raised their kids here, all graduates of Manhattan High. The only reason I didn't get to grow up here is because, like many, I was an army brat. My aunt and two of my uncles still live here. My siblings and nieces are growing up and going to school here. My entire community is Manhattan. So, don't you dare accuse me of not being a member of this community. Everyone watching knows that this was nothing but a personal attack because that is not even a requirement on the rules you so easily throw in the trash whenever you feel like. In fact, the last time I was here to speak, it was rather ironic that you decided to silence me because I was actually coming up here to read this. A comment, sorry, this. A a comment on your inconsistencies. I have not changed the dates. I will read it to you exactly as it is written. I am not someone who usually advocates for strict rules during commission meetings. I think it discourages public comments and makes it overly complicated for taxpaying citizens who may not have experience speaking here but certainly have the right to be heard. However, what I cannot stand is the inconsistency and injustice with which you over-police regular folks while completely disregarding those same rules when it comes to outsiders, developers, and upper-crust community members of our town. Time and time again, I have seen rules such as not allowing commissioners to respond to speakers or time limits blatantly ignored. It's nauseating. Two weeks ago, you let a Springfield, Missouri resident and a vice president of sales for the Hilton, a $26 million-a-year company, speak for almost six minutes while in the same breath openly advocating to cut your own citizens' time short for the tax hearing that you didn't have. You regularly let citizens speak without starting a time or requiring an address. Just last week, once again during a work meeting, the commission exchanged several comments with the vice president of Bayer Construction. I could go on all night if I was the VP of Sales for a large corporation, but I'm just a taxpayer. So, I've only got five minutes. I do encourage residents to look back at this year alone. It's egregious. It's not even a pattern, it's a practice. Commission-reading rules are not set by the state. The commissioners set them, and the commissioners can change them or ignore them at any time. We may not be able to hold them accountable for breaking their own rules, but we should pay attention to who they break them for. Thank you.
Amber?
Amber Starling, 408 Houston Street. My wife is a polarizing topic. I'm sure you've noticed. Her morals are unyielding. Coming up against her can feel abrasive. She's logical, direct. If you don't leave your ego at the door, it's bound to be wounded. I can't imagine that a single commissioner would describe her as healing and kind, but all of her friends would. You should try being on her good side. She buried her innocence at 10 years old within her evangelical Christian parents caught her wearing a dress at her aunt's house. She always knew she was a baby girl. Nothing within her had changed. But in that moment, she transformed from her father's favorite son into a monster to be brutally abused for the simple crime of not meeting her family's narrow expectations. In church, they played devout followers of God, but at home, the physical and emotional violence was an expanding daily hell. Her father beat her so often that she learned to fix her dislocated shoulders by driving them into a door jam. She can still do that to this day. You should now be able to understand why your hypocrisy disgusts her so deeply and why she supports true colors. She has experienced homelessness many times in her life. At 20, they started, or at 10, they started kicking her out. Rain, shine, night, day, heat advisories, thunderstorm watches, no matter what she was wearing. They tossed her out in pajamas and bare feet in the Kansas snow. She slept in the crawl space under the house and learned to wake up every hour to avoid hypothermia. Once she could finally rent a home of her own, she rented one as big as she could afford and started giving away bedrooms to other youth escaping neglect, to friends experiencing eviction, to pregnant women escaping domestic violence. She was working three jobs to do it. She's been in retail, food service, nursing. Unlike you, she knows what it's like to try and cram a $40 parking membership into an already fragile budget. It's a lot more than a pedicure, isn't it? She gave away so many bedrooms that she eventually moved into a pallet of blankets in a linen closet. And even then, shared it with a mama cat and kittens. In the winter, she would walk her neighborhood and the parks close by, looking for the unhoused and inviting them to sleep in her home. She was not blind to the danger. She simply accepted it as a hazard of doing the right thing. You should now be able to understand why she's so passionate about the housing crisis. Because she has been in so many other people's shoes, she does not look down on others. Many I have met strive to see everyone as equals, but none have come closer than she. Fame, wealth, and status hold no meaning to her. I have seen her treat street performers and beggars with more warmth and welcome than an incongruous member of the U.S. Cabinet and a Braggard Atlanta CEO with a mansion the size of a mall. Don't believe him, just ask him. You should now be able to understand why she doesn't just give you respect. To her, respect is earned by the expression of character and ethics alone. She doesn't allow herself the luxury of willful ignorance. She deliberately looks in her own wake. In modern American society, we are complicit every day in a thousand untold horrors. Our privileged lives have consequences, and if you don't see them, you aren't looking. The only way for us to have all of this is through massive ecological harm and the suffering and dispossession of those human beings at the bottom of the supply chain. When she eats a chocolate bar, she understands that generations of lives have been destroyed for it. She experiences the bitter with the sweet. And unlike you, she chooses to eat less chocolate. She drives a crappy old beater with no air conditioning because, to her, buying a new car is wasteful, and she isn't willing to put her comfort above other people's lives. For a politician who has not confronted For a politician who has not confronted and cannot linger in that discomfort, she is terrifying. But truth springing from the bottom of a well always is. Was it not obvious that she's Ida Leopold's grandchild, for God's sake? That she is following in the footsteps of a woman who adopted disabled teens from foster care instead of letting them age out in the system? Who was appointed by the mayor to the Housing Authority Board of Commissioners and served there for twenty years? Less than a year ago, the Housing Authority dedicated a bench in Ida's honor, and less than a month ago, you spit in her granddaughter's face. And why was it easier to believe that she was an interloper with no right to speak instead of a constituent that your policies were actively harming? Are you that allergic to accountability? Why was it easier to believe that she was here to humiliate and torment you instead of speaking on behalf of her friends and family and neighbors who couldn't come? Are you that narcissistic? You have an unequal power dynamic with your citizens. She comes here to tell you that you're stepping on us, and somehow you don't have the decency to say, "I'm sorry," but you still found the audacity to say, "Quiet down." Jessica is only a mirror. If you don't like what you see, change it.
Are there any other public comments that don't have anything to do with the consent agenda or the general agenda? Okay, moving on. Um, Commissioner comments.
I just want to recognize that we have four firemen from Manhattan Fire Department who are last week they went to Florida. They're now in North Carolina helping with hurricane relief efforts as part of the Kansas Task Force.
That's a mess.
Right before the meeting, I was at the ribbon cutting for Flint Hills ATA. They were able to expand and improve their facilities, and I just want to mention my sincere gratitude to them and the service that they provide to this community. They are essential to this community. We need to have them for essential services to get to things like work in the grocery store. We have a lot of people that depend on them, so we need to continue our support.
Yeah, we had a really good turnout. I'm on the ATA board, and I have a free bus pass if anybody wants to have it. We need to take the bus, and I see more and more people taking the bus. And the ATA board allows the city to access federal funds, and the million-dollar expansion and the new buses are all either National Department of Transportation or K dot money. So bringing a million dollars into the community is always a positive. Okay. That's back to the consent agenda then. Items on the consent agenda are those of a routine and housekeeping nature or those items which have been previously reviewed by the city commission and may be approved in one motion. A commissioner may request an item be removed for separate discussion and considered immediately following the consent agenda. Is there any comment from the public on the consent agenda? It's do I hear a motion to approve?
I do have questions about E two.
Okay.
Which is the Cypress Ridge Project. The, what is it, sixty-one thousand would be coming from workforce housing sales tax dollars?
We have Jill Jacoby in the audience. Do you?
Jamie, is your question more about where the money's coming from?
Yeah, like I'm very much in support of the project, and I think it's something great. And actually, it's better than what it was, right? Is that my understanding that the fees are lower than what we thought? I think mine was the question of how that fits into workforce housing sales tax? And then if the other options are, and I, Jason and I exchanged some emails about that, but just wanting to see what everyone else's thoughts. I mean, I believe the only other option would be to waive the fees or look at essentially general fund. I don't know what everyone else's thoughts are in.
Well, I think we decided to do this before we changed the policy. Then we changed it. So, and now because the fees went down, I don't think that's a reason to change what we've decided before.
Well, and John thinks, I was trying to read back through things, and it looks like before it was it, I was trying to read, read the minutes, and it was kind of confusing on if something was attached to it. If everyone else, if that's where we're feeling, that's, I'll, I'll leave it there.
I think it's, I think it's a good discussion. This was one of like the first things that we had talked about for the workforce housing money. And, you know, we've talked about this, this band of sixty to one hundred twenty percent of area median income for this money. But I, I don't know that, I don't think that it's wise of us to, to put a floor on that. And when you look at a lot of the dynamics that are going on in the, in the housing market, folks are staying in their homes longer, thus leaving them off the market because there isn't a, an alternative for good humane age-in-place living. And I think this type of this type of community could, could offer that alternative. And the folks that are going to move into it will put their houses on the market. And hopefully they will be at a they'll be at a price that folks can, can afford. At least that's the theory anyway, so, you know. I think when we look at spending this workforce housing money, you know, we're not going to just build our way out of it. But this is something that can kind of relieve one of those dynamics that is at play that's creating kind of this, this shortage.
I think Jill could, could expound on the people that are in the, the Wreath Avenue. And they are, they're really happy with that housing, and I mean, it's really nice. And they have this common room that they decorated out of. But Jill, I see what you're saying is that elderly people who want to live in a more secure, safe place with all the handicap accessibilities and that kind of thing may move from their house into this, and that will free up more possible purchases in, in Manhattan.
Yeah, and, and from what I've heard, we have a shortage of affordable senior housing anyways, which we have a shortage of everybody, but.
I mean, I agree with all that. It, it, with it being an important project to happen, I just I don't know if it's in the spirit of workforce housing sales tax dollars. I know we, we passed a resolution that goes into effect for low income in January, this January, that we can use it for that. I guess mine was more maybe questioning the use of that for senior care in the, and maybe I'm more thinking in the spirit and it's a semantics game. I know workforce housing is how we're categorizing that sixty to one twenty, but I, I was thinking of it more literally as well that it's not the intended target. But if everyone's comfortable with it staying there, I'm not going to pursue and push it somewhere else.
I think so.
Yeah, I, I think the hope is it will free up more housing for starter families and that kind of thing and, and move seniors into housing that they can, you know, stay and not have to go into because they are so handicapped accessible in the bathrooms or have wider doors and all that kind of thing. So we're providing for the seniors, you know. And we need all kinds of housing, and also.
We, we do, and I just want to make sure that, I mean, but workforce housing sales tax dollars aren't for all kinds of housing. I mean, we have some limits on them, yeah.
And I think we're sort of taking baby steps with all of this.
Yeah.
Okay, are there any other, do you want, anybody want to pull out anything else? I'd like to note
We can leave that on there.
Carla Hagemeister has been appointed to the Douglas Center Advisory Board, and she was on W I B W the other night. She was the citizen of the week or the citizen of the day or something. She did a nice job talking about the breadbasket. And Nancy Rocheloe, did I do that right?
Yes.
Thank you, has been appointed to the Riley County Commission by Solid Waste Committee and the Solid Waste Management Committee, and we hope that they will meet soon. They don't meet very often. Okay, so do I hear a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll move that we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Move in second. Would you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Opel?
Yes.
Commissioner Mata?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitten?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Mokoa?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero.
Okay, now we move on to the general agenda. And if there are comments that people want to make to the general agenda, we are considering a request for qualifications for proposals for Sunrise and Sunset Cemetery's improvements and historic designation for Sunset Cemetery. And do we do comment?
Staff presentation first. I think we should move that. I think we need to move that to the bottom because it confuses Susan too. You're good.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Aaron Stewart, Parks and Rec Director, here to talk about the request for qualifications and request for proposals for the cemetery improvements. Back in January, we, we adopted a cemetery master plan, and this was the next step in this is to further refine the, the cost of this plan. But we're going to kind of go through kind of the background and review a lot of that information that was there. Currently, we manage two cemeteries. Sunset Cemetery, which is approximately forty-five acres. It is our oldest cemetery. It established in eighteen sixty. Sunrise Cemetery, established in nineteen sixty. It's approximately eighty acres. Again, we adopted the plan, and that identified the construction and of a new office and maintenance facilities at Sunrise, a joint maintenance shop at Sunset Cemetery that would be shared with Sunset Zoo, new columbarium sites, infrastructure upgrades, which include road and utility improvements, and ADA compliant access enhancement and historical restorations at Sunset. The design team, and this is where the commission would take part in, we would issue the RFQ, which requires your permission or your approval. The selection of the team, we were looking to select the, the team that has the best overall value with the city, and then, of course, an agreement for phase one services. So all of that flows through the commission for approval. Just like CECO, we would enter the phase one design services because this is a design-build process and for pre-construction till we get a thirty percent design that we would bring back to the commission with a guaranteed maximum price, a GMP. You would approve that design, the GMP, and then the phase two agreement, so. And then we would do construction and ideally have a closeout and a finished product. So the key improvements identified at Sunrise, which is where a bulk of this work will occur, is a new office which allows for ADA compliance, the renovation of the existing shop that's been there since the fifties or sixties, construction of a new forty by eighty shop. As you noticed on your tours, we have to maintain all of our equipment outside because it cannot fit in our existing shop in expansion and enclosing the maintenance yard. So that's both better security, and if you use things like PDS slats, it will actually create a visual barrier back from several of the grave sites. Here's the plan and section that you've seen before. The existing office slash, I call it a house that was built in the fifties, is existing right here, and we would move that down to the space level to create that ADA access. For those that were out there, Mike has told you that there have been times where he has had to assist people up the stairway that are in wheelchairs by pulling them backwards up that. And so it's not very conducive and inviting for those that have mobility challenges. This is kind of the existing conditions. One of the things that I caught that I, I know we didn't necessarily show you when you were out there is the shop restroom was intriguing to me as you literally cannot pass that door to get to the toilet. You have to finagle your way back to the sink to close the door. I recognize that I'm a little larger than the average person, but even, even a smaller stature would have trouble. And so it's, it's simple things like this that exist well before ADA implications took place. The lobby and office, again, this is where we're meeting people on a lot of times their worst day to discuss where they're going to bury a loved one. So, and of course, the office entry where we're talking about the stairs and the open yard and exposed equipment. Sunset, key improvements there. Joint maintenance facility, and I'll cover that in a minute, but the columbarium design and construction, this would be one of the features that we could add to actually Sunset Cemetery is sold out for all intents and purposes, and this would add some opportunities for columbariums for people to purchase those in Sunset, which are highly desired at this point. Infrastructure improvements, roads, irrigation, and of course ADA improvements along with that. And the memorial arch repair. So the shop concept, this joint shop you can see would be shared, and this is kind of for reference right down here out of sight of the Sunset Cemetery, shared with the zoo that would clean up a lot of that, and it's literally just a mirror image on each side. And, and so here are some pictures of the existing conditions. This is the culvert failure that's out there right now. We have the ability to do maybe a temporary fix this winter, but the reality is, is this, this kind of, you can see it's not just there. Or the roads are literally falling apart. Talking to Mike, there have been no improvements done in either cemetery to that extent to refurbish this since ninety, the mid nineties. Again, fixing the monument, all important pieces. One of the benefits by adding that shared shop in there is we can remove some of the existing conditions at Sunset Zoo. So as we develop that master plan, as you're aware, it became apparent where we could clean up some of this, which is more bang for your buck. And these are just images of the structures that would be removed at that point. As you can see, they're pretty well out of shape and dilapidated and have exceeded their lifespan for the most part. So again, financial considerations, there are no, no cost issue, the RFP, RFQ. The project estimate cost is estimated around ten million. Part of this was to try to refine that by going to an RFQ, RFP to dial that in. That was the estimates outlined in the master plan. So we really want to, we think that will be refined down. So we want to select a design-build team in a phase one, phase two agreement similar to CECO. So potential timeline, if we issue the design build tomorrow, proposals will be due on November fourth. December third, selection committee and recommendation to the city commission. The commission would consider the final scope and the phase one agreement on January seventh. Then May, we'd be looking for that thirty percent GMP in a phase two agreement. Summer of twenty-five, we'd begin construction with an ideal. Ideally, we would end in summer of twenty twenty-six. Obviously, that is weather dependent. So what you also have in front of you today is the Historic Resources Board has made a recommendation to create this historic district that is Sunset Cemetery. It also has the Land Water Tower, the Sexton House, and some other individual nominations in there. This was presented to the Cemetery and Parks and Rec Advisory Board, and their recommendation is delaying the nomination till after the completion of the construction. So to be clear, the discrepancy here is the timing. Both boards agree, including staff, agree that this designation should probably happen. The desire from those boards and staff would be to delay that for construction to avoid any unnecessary additional reviews that would happen that could delay construction. And so that's kind of the discrepancy that we're going to ask you to weigh on these two different recommendations is either to move ahead or delay. So if you were to move ahead with the timeline or when that happens, one to two months for their nomination draft, three to five months for state review and draft approval. And then the month sixth, sorry, month six to ten, Kansas Sites Review Board approves the state listing. And then month twelve to eighteen, National Park Service approves a national listing, so. So happy to answer any questions. The two kind of things that we've outlined for you today is we're asking for a recommendation either to, you know, delay the pursuit of that historic nomination until after the construction or pursue it as of now with the construction and/or take action on either approve the issuance of the design RFP, RFQ or deny the issuance of the RFQ, RFP. Questions?
Yeah, question. How does it work if you actually start construction and the reviews going on at the same time?
I'm going to defer Ben.
Ben Schmuel, Senior Planner. You were asking if you could begin construction during the nomination process?
Right, that'd be the first question. If you say no, you can't, then that answers the second question, which is, how would you do that?
Yeah, so just beginning the nomination process, submitting a nomination to the state doesn't establish any moratorium or anything on, on anything within that proposed district boundary. You can yeah, so there's no issues there. It's just as soon as the state approves of that nomination and it's listed on the state register, then state law, state preservation law begins to apply, and then those projects have to be reviewed. So if it's already essentially started, you know, a building permit is issued or with projects that don't necessarily require a building permit but are already substantially underway, those would not be affected.
Okay, so if, say they didn't like something that we already were halfway through, it'd kind of be like, that's too late for that. But say there was a second part that hadn't started yet, that kind of fit with the first part, would there be a risk there that someone's saying, well, yeah, I know you had, these were kind of complimentary, but we still see them as separate, and then you could have a problem doing them?
Yeah, the trigger is going to be a building permit. For subdivisions of the state or, you know, subdivisions of the government, it's a little bit different because sometimes we don't have building permits or, you know, we do work that Because sometimes we don't have building permits or, you know, we do work that the, the public generally isn't doing, like building roads. So we do have to make a call on if a project is equivalent to something that would require a building permit. And if it were split into different phases and, you know, one phase was complete and then we moved into another. We might see that as, as requiring a review if it weren't, if it didn't have a nexus with the original project.
Okay, and that, you know, obviously you're doing contracts and there's certain timing with contractors, get things done. That would, you know, that delay could cause a financial issue or something with the project because, you know, someone came on board figuring they were going to finish within X amount of time. And now all of a sudden you have a review that could blow that up?
Depending on the, the review type, that the timeline is different. So smaller projects, we're able to review administratively. Those are called minor reviews. Larger project, we call those major reviews. Those would have to be reviewed by the Historic Resources Board. And, and that can take several weeks to maybe a month, depending on the, the schedule with, with their meetings.
Okay.
What is the? I guess when I think of putting something in a historic registry, I think of you preserving that for future land. Are there like more reasons that we're looking at? Like what are the, the advantages to having this listed on the historic register? I apologize for anyone that's going to be mad that I don't already know that answer.
So from a, yeah, from a practical standpoint, there are financial incentives for preservation work. So there are tax credits and grants available through the state, through the National Park Service. Occasionally NPOs will, will offer support for certain projects. So there's the, the financial incentive. I, I will say that there's not a lot in the cemetery that would qualify for those programs. Within the proposed boundary. It's, it's really buildings, habitable structures that qualify. So we'd be looking at the Sexton's House, the Paisley Tower. The Girl Scout Little House is outside of that district, but you know, is a building that would qualify. Outside of that, there's more soft benefits, you know, just related to civic pride and tourism. And yeah, just kind of bolstering the, recognizing the, the history of a community and, and instilling it in the, the, the register.
So I feel like it would be pretty easy, given the current state of the district that we're proposing. Those are all very old, not just old, but historic buildings. Cemeteries especially are one of the most important historic locations of, of many communities. How could adding a new building into this historic district affect the approval and, and all that process?
So just to clarify, Commissioner, you're talking about the, the proposed joint maintenance facility?
Well, no, the columbariums as well.
So I don't know that those would be considered a building as much as a?
It, it could be.
There have been people that are telling me that they're concerned that the columbarium would be better put at Sunrise.
Yeah, the columbariums have been a point of issue for the HRB and individuals in the community. In consultation with the state, they did not see that as a, a recommended installation. Specifically at the location where it is. But that would not necessarily affect the eligibility of establishing a district, if that more so answers your question.
So that, no. They, 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 they didn't recommend we put it there, but it wouldn't prevent the district from being designated?
Correct, just if, if those were to be established and we came back a year later and wanted to pursue a historic nomination. There's a very small chance that that would actually put it in the category of no longer eligible.
Okay. And the reason we are putting them there is just because of the, the desire for folks to be, to, to spend eternity there?
Yes.
As opposed to Sunrise?
Yes, that's, there's been a high desire for people to locate there versus Sunrise. In particular in those columbariums. They would also add from a financial component, they would contribute to the overall care fund that would go in, well, as long as it could maintain that in perpetuity. So there would be an opportunity to generate some revenue back into that location that would, again, help take care of that facility, that cemetery for a longer haul. I mean, it, eventually you run out of those endowed funds and you'll be managing that with taxes. But it's a way to help inject some revenue into that system.
Aaron, when we talked about this before in March?
January.
January. I thought the price tag was 3 million.
That was for, this is for both cemeteries and all of the road infrastructure. So the, the total ta, the total price tag was just under 10 million. It was nine and some change for both cemeteries. 3 million was for Sun, Sunset just by itself.
Go ahead.
I mean, I have some questions, but I'm interested in public comment before.
Well, we, we.
So I was just saying, I'm, I'll hold mine.
So we finished with? Yeah, we would entertain public comment on this subject. Not Mick on here? Yeah, Mick, Charney. And Kathy Delvachowski.
I think you can.
Mick Charney, 1420 Waterford. I'm also a member of the Historic Resources Board. And I come to you tonight to underscore the uniqueness and the importance of our Sunset Cemetery. It's a gorgeous cemetery. And I hope with a superb design and significant historical importance. And I hope that eventually it will become nominated to both the state and the national registers of historic places. I want to reinforce that what we have here is very special, very valuable, very precious. And that we need not to despoil it in any way. We need to take special care of that cemetery. It's deserving of a very methodical, deliberate, and careful approach to making any alterations. This is election season. You've probably heard the term low information voters. And so I ask only that as you discuss and reconcile the differing viewpoints, you will hear about alterations to Sunset Cemetery, particularly the columbariums, that you do not become low information arbiters of that discussion. And so we all recognize the beauty of the cemetery. I thought I would address a little bit the historical significance. There are 2,371 cemeteries or burial grounds in Kansas. Of which only 22 are on the national register. Ours would be the 23rd. And if you organize those cemeteries chronologically, you can see number six, we would be the sixth oldest cemetery in Kansas on the national register. And if you organize them by their origin or their type, we would be the second oldest civic cemetery in Kansas on the national register. Superseded only by Topeka's cemetery. If you map all that out, I'll show you where the locations are for these 22 or 23 cemeteries. And as you can see, most of them are east of us. There we are, number six. And when you map that out, what that says to me is that our forefathers and settlers of the town were very enlightened. They were very foresighted and they were very aware of what was going on in terms of cemetery styles and fads and fashions. And so here they are, right on the frontier. That's one of the far western cemeteries we have, furthest western cemeteries we have in Kansas. There's a layout of the cemetery beautifully designed over the years, over many decades. And what's wonderful about it is it starts off on the east side as a very Jeffersonian sort of grid. It transitions into a Beaux-Arts or city beautiful sort of movement. And then from there, takes a turn, a curve around that dogleg into a portion of the cemetery that we might classify as romantic or picturesque. All done very beautifully. Cheryl Collins, the late Cheryl Collins, had exactly right when she said that it was a progression of layer upon layer of different landscape movements. And here we have it all preserved in one cemetery, almost as if it's a museum of these movements. And it parallels the east to west settlement of the country, in fact. You know, you've heard the expression, go west, young man. If you compare it to other cemeteries like Topeka Cemetery or Mount Vernon Cemetery in Atchison, which is now officially on the national register. You'll see that those two, those other two are sort of grid-like cemeteries, kind of boilerplate, whereas ours is much more inventive in terms of its design. You can see it from the aerial points of view as well, how unique our cemetery is. They even erected a gate that's a really interesting gateway, much more prominent than the gateways on either of the other two cemeteries. And part of the beauty of the cemetery is due to individuals like Cora Kimball. Who prodded her neighbors and coached them to plant trees. And that's why the place is just so beautiful and lovely. If you look at Sunset Cemetery up above and Topeka down below, you can see the difference. Or you compare our Sunset to Mount Vernon Cemetery in Atchison, again, you can see the difference. We've got a beautiful, beautiful picturesque gardens, rural cemetery here. Other views, they took care over those decades to make sure that there was a contrast of light and shade, open spaces, more closed spaces and so forth. Texture, color, form, these were all important elements in the design of the cemetery, as well as curving your eye and your path around the dogleg there. And so if I have one admonition, it would be please, please, whatever you do, don't allow columbariums to be located anywhere near that tower. Because it's clear to me by reading the accounts at the time, that they, those individuals never intended that area to be built on with anything else except that tower. Thank you very much for your attention.
Whoa, perfect timing. Thank you, Mick.
Okay.
Kathy Delvachowski.
Good evening, I'm Kathy Delvachowski, I live at 100 South Delaware Avenue. I am in support of establishing this historic district. And I wanted to mention the Sexton's House. I know there's been some concerns among city officials about the ownership situation with the Sexton's House. And so I want to comment on that and say that normally an historic district is united around a theme. The properties within an historic district all support a common theme, which in this case would be the cemetery. And I think the Sexton's House then clearly belongs in this district because it was there to support the cemetery. So I, I mentioned this because in the, the minutes of the cemetery board, it was, it was mentioned that perhaps the boundary could be withdrawn. Do not include the Sexton's House. And so I just wanted to argue in favor in keeping it because it clearly fits the scene, the theme of the cemetery. Because it was part of the support of the overall operations of the cemetery. And also I think that moving forward, that would be a way to honor that gift from the Kimball family when they donated the land to construct the Sexton's House. If it was part of the historic district and therefore was preserved more long-term. And then also I wanted to mention tax credits in terms of what, how that can be a benefit. It was reported at the July Historic Resources Board meeting that there's roof work that needs to happen at the Douglas Annex. And the city was looking to use tax credits to help pay for that. So clearly the city is aware of how tax credits are a benefit for an historic district. In case you aren't aware, the Douglas Annex is in the Yuma Street Historic District. And so they, they do have financial benefits towards maintenance of city-owned properties, and that would be the case here in the cemetery. I thought perhaps the memorial gate and adjacent shelter would be eligible. I'll defer to Ben if he doesn't think that because it's not a, a traditional building, they wouldn't be eligible. But might be something to look into whether there was a possibility they could be used or a grant funds could help with any work that has to happen at those gates. So again, I just wanted to mention, I very much support establishment of that historic district sooner rather than later.
Kathy, is the water tower in historic district?
The water tower currently is already on the national register. It is not in an historic district, but it is proposed to be included in this district.
Okay. Is there any other public comment? Mel?
Good evening, Commissioners. My name's Catherine Hensler and I reside at 439 Northfield Road. Tonight I come to you as a private citizen, often I'm up here for a very different reason. But I wanted to speak with you from the perspective of someone who is a historian, who is a preservationist. And also a conservator of historic cemeteries and the monuments that are within those boundaries. First, I want to thank the Historic Resources Board and Ben and others who have pursued and worked very hard on this proposal for nomination that is being presented tonight. As Mick mentioned, in our state, there are very, there is a very small number of cemeteries that are actually on the national register. And you may already know this, but there are none in Riley County, which also means there aren't none in Manhattan currently listed. Yet there are eligible cemeteries and Sunset Cemetery happens to be at the top of that list. Sunset Cemetery is a unique example of a rural or garden-style cemetery while operating also as a municipal cemetery. That doesn't often happen that way. If we look at the design and Mick showed a, a great illustration of the different varieties of development of the landscape. We can identify those trends in American history, which reflected in cemeteries from the rural to the garden park and then on to the memorial park. All of those styles are encompassed in Sunset Cemetery. You also probably already know this, but cemeteries were also the first type of planned green space in the United States. And that dates back to 1831. So while considering this proposal to nominate the Sunset Cemetery as a potential district. Please also know that listing will not exclude the cemetery or the contributing properties from functional infrastructure repairs and improvements. But something like this may also open the possibilities of funding through additional federal, state, and private funding. And as they have also mentioned tonight, tax credits. These kinds of things can alleviate the burden on the taxpayer. So this is a, a way to create infusion of funding, not limiting what can be done. Preservation often, as we all know in the business, can sometimes get a negative reputation as a force that stops progress. But with this type of thing, let us work together to illustrate how preservation can work as a partnership through balance and collaboration. It does not have to stop progress. You also have a number of organizations in the community that are dedicated to preservation and cultural resources, who may be willing to step in and assist from a number of different ways. So let us not view this nomination or preservation as a roadblock, but as an opportunity or a tool for the betterment of our community. I do support this nomination of the Sunset Cemetery as a historic district to state and/or national registries. And I compliment the work towards this goal that has been done through the Planning Department, the HRB, Parks and Rec Department, and the Cemetery Board. They have already put a lot of work into this, let's keep this going. Commissioners, I hope tonight that you too can see the value that this brings to our community and those who will enjoy this park space and reflection space for years to come. Thank you.
Thank you. Come on up, don't argue.
Good evening, Commissioners. Colleen Lynn, 2048 Hunting. I come before you to ask for your support for designation or to apply for listing, for historic listing for Sunset Cemetery now, rather than later. I'd like to just echo and concur with the previous commenters who emphasized what an incredible historic resource and cultural resource this is for our community. I'd also like to echo the comments that indicate. I'd also like to echo the comments that indicate the value, the asset that we get by having the listing now rather than later. In addition to mixed comments about the historicity of the place and the beauty of the place, I'll point out, as a Riley County Historical Society Board member, I've come to realize the incredible value for inspiring and educating the public about local history through Sunset Cemetery. How many people did we have at our tour last year? The October tour, 100? 102? It's easily the most popular event that the Riley County Historical Society sponsors. People love that cemetery, they love the history that's represented there. So it's a, it's a really incredible asset. But I'd like you Commissioners to think about three other concerns that I have as you weigh this decision. One has to do with the competing recommendations that you're getting from your advisory boards. We, of course, ask the specialized citizen experts to weigh on these kinds of issues, and then we ask you to make a larger decision from a broader community perspective. Tonight, you're faced with a tough decision. You've got two boards saying one way and one board saying another way. I would ask you to please consider going with the Historic Resource Board because they are the experts on this issue. We ask these advisory boards to listen to staff, to study these issues, to bring their particular expertise to these boards. And in this case, on this issue, the Historic Resource Board is the board that has the expertise that would trump the Parks and Recs Board and the Cemetery Board. Of course, these board members all bring important information, but when you have this kind of competing recommendation, I would recommend that you go with the experts in that field. Secondly, I sense that there is this sense of risk with going with the historical designation now. And Commissioner Motta, your comments spoke to some financial risks potentially. Well, I would ask you to also consider the risks of not going for resource, for designation now. Because it is such a rich historical asset, if we don't have access to the kind of expertise that we get through the Kansas State Historical Society once it's listed, if we don't consider the implications for the historicity or the look of the place as we make these kinds of changes, there's a risk that we do degrade it. I, I as well have to go with Ben's point that it's a relatively small chance that it wouldn't be listed. But of course, the listing itself is icing on the cake. We also want to be respectful of the true historic resource that it is and the historic assets that it is. And if we don't do the historic designation now, we risk harming it in some way that we simply don't know. In other words, those reviews that would be done by the HRB, they're of value to us in preserving this historical asset. And then third, I want to key in on a phrase that Professor Charney used, deliberate. I, you know, the, the information that was provided in Mr. Stewart's presentation is that there seemed to be a reticence that going for preservation or the historic listing now would prevent delays in construction improvements. I don't think those delays will be significant, but even if they are, as you suggested, Commissioner McCullough, this is $10 million. I think there's good reason to be deliberate about these changes, above and beyond the potential damage that we could be doing to this historic asset. Let's be careful and make sure that we do these right if we're going to make this kind of investment in both of these properties. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mel Borst, 1918 Humble Street, Landmark Neb, neighborhood, Landmark Water Tower neighborhood, across from the cemetery, which is a big part of our neighborhood, is cemetery and its associated Sexton House and shop. I waited till last because I'm the least eloquent of these speakers tonight, but I observed that what they have told you tonight is, is something a preservation planner from the city would be telling you and guiding throughout this process. And we, we used to have a preservation planner for a few years, but that was many, many years ago. But this cemetery plan, especially for Sunset Cemetery, is, it's obvious that a preservation planner was not involved with it. So in that absence, the comments tonight, I think, are very, very important for you to consider. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Mel, did you sign in?
Thank you.
Hearing none. Commissioner comment?
I am, I'm gonna agree with the historic preservation folks on this one. You know, I, I realized the, the historic significance of, of the cemetery before mixed comments, but I didn't fully appreciate the, the artistic vision that was put into place. And I, I am kind of concerned about how adding new structures, they call buildings or columbariums, whatever, it could dramatically change the outlay of, of the cemetery. And, you know, my first thought when we were, when I, I heard about bringing up, you know, bringing up the district was that, oh, cool, there's probably some funding available in grants and stuff like that for maintenance if we have the, these things, or if we have that district in place. And $10 million is a lot, given our financial position. I would really want us to, to be deliberate about this, and I understand there's a lot of maintenance that needs to be done. I think we can do the maintenance as soon as we, as soon as possible. And maybe do this in phases. Yeah.
Well, I agree with staff, and I think they understand the historical significance of the cemetery, and they're not going to do anything to degrade it. And I do, I'm concerned about the delays or things we could get into, or, you know, or trying to enter into contracts and then have something pop up. Even if we prevail and it works out fine, those delays can still happen. So I would be for delaying the designation until after the project is done. Having said that, as far as the $10 million goes, this is from the bonded interest fund that this would come from, and, you know, we just took $2 million out of that to spend on operational things. And while I'm fine with approving this because it's just for the RFP, when it comes to actually do the money, I think we have to take a really hard look of where we are as far as we have any debt coming off to help offset these payments, what other bonded projects are we looking at, how are we going to make up for the $2 million that we took, took out? Because just like we do the regular budget, it's this priority over that priority. And while I think this is a real big priority, is there something we can say we're not going to do because we're going to do this instead? So again, not for tonight, but for the future.
I, I think we're kind of at a point where, first of all, doing the historic preservation, that's to me a no-brainer because, quite frankly, it's a positive thing to have, but there aren't many teeth in it to prevent anything bad that we might want to do. I mean, like, the downtown courthouse and that kind of thing, they ask, you know, the buildings are around, but if you try and argue with them, you won't win. I mean, the, the people, but $10 million, I'm sorry, but we just didn't give staff a raise. We just ended up, you know, raising the mill rate for mills. I, I don't think we need to spend $10 million fixing up the cemeteries. I mean, as I understand it, we only have had one burial in Sunset this year. Is that right? And seven last year? And so, you know, couldn't we just put the equipment on a truck and take it over? I mean, I, it's just, to me, I thought this was $3 million in January. I don't remember a $10 million thing. But, but we've, we have no CIP, and even if it's in bonded interest, if you figure 20-year loan, that's $500,000 a year, interest at 4%, that's $400,000. So we're talking about $1 million a year out of the bonded interest fund. I mean, just putting things in there, I'm sorry, but we, we gotta find a way to cut back. I, I mean, I just, I really feel so bad about not giving staff even a cola. And we're talking about $10 million to fix up the cemeteries. I, that's where I am. I think the historic preservation, let's go ahead and apply for it, it'll take forever. And it'll be lovely to have it, but I don't think it will in any way interrupt whatever we want to do, wherever we want to do it.
The, the whole project has, I've been a little conflicted with, because in going out there and touring, I mean, there's, there's so much needed items out. I mean, when we're looking in Aaron's pictures only, you know, capture a little bit of it. You don't get to see everything, and honestly, the meeting space is, as Aaron said, not where people want to be on very difficult days.
Not dignified.
It, it's not. I, I don't think represents us well. So this one's a tough one for me on all of these, because you see how these can be very useful improvements, you see from safety, staff retention, overall comfort of people, you know, those sort of things, on both, on both Sunset and Sunrise, the, the quality there. $10 million is, is a lot of money for something that doesn't have a significant financial return, or, you know, I'm always interested in population, those sort of things, that's gonna recruit more people. You know, then I'm also like, oh, the longer we, what? Yeah. You know, the longer we, we put it off, though, the more expensive things get. And, and I'm coming at this from a very delayed point of view and not, not being involved on the front end, so, so I don't, I don't know that I have as much, just general knowledge on the, on the program. I tend to be more with John on, on delaying that. I, I think tonight, it would be too quick for us to say, "Go for it," if we haven't even made a decision on what we're doing in there, whether we're moving forward or not with the project as a whole. I think that, that to me, might, might change things. I, overall with the project, I know, Aaron, you talked a little bit about the perpetual fund. I can't think of what it's, I can't think of what I'm saying, but I know we've spoken before, and I'm assuming as part of this, we're going to talk more about, I'm gonna say cost recovery, but we've talked about the price for burials, and then in the master plan, there's reference to the reclamation policy on spaces that haven't been used but have been purchased. And so regardless of what we do, I hope we're looking at those policies and going to talk about that. I know today's about RFQ, though, and not, not that.
Well, just to touch on those points, a quick synopsis, and I'll kind of come back to that question that Commissioner McCullough asked, which is, how many burials are actually happening in Sunset? Sunset's the smaller of the projects here. That's the $3 million.
It's quite full, too.
Well, it's, it's.
Sunrise is the smaller.
It's Sunset. So Sunset's the smaller of the two projects, give or take approximately $3 million. And the Sunrise project is the bigger one, which is the shop, the office. You're looking at me confused.
Well, on the last page of the master plan?
Yes.
It has Sunrise as 3.3, and Sunset.
With the new shop?
What?
With the new shop?
The new office. I think you're, do I get to be more right than Aaron on something? Because that is a big day. It has Sunrise as 3.36 million.
Okay.
And then Sunset as 6 million. With, that includes the road construction. I'm sorry, that's probably the difference. This one I'm looking at has all the road construction.
Yes, so that's true. If you phase in, if we did all the roads at one time, you're.
So we can both be right on that one, Aaron.
Six million, yeah. So, sorry, yes, 6 million. I had that backwards. 6 million at Sunset, and the primary cause of that is the reconstruction of the roads. The joint shop is a significant portion, estimated at 1.3. But you can see there are five different reconstruction of roads, ADA sidewalk entry, the arch setting, those are actually on the cheaper end, but that's where the bulk of that cost is coming from. So the 3.3 million that's estimated at Sunrise is the, one of the most important things we'll do as far as where people meet, ADA access, renovating some of those spaces. So if we were to hire an employee that needed accessibility into a restroom, they would have it, because right now, they don't. So those are some of the more important things at that location. Sunset, the roads are literally crumbling. They're literally crumbling, to the point of, and I, I shouldn't have shot this picture in the morning. Sorry, I went past it. That hole is almost two feet deep. That's the, the culvert that failed. And there's another one just like it on the other side of the road, where that whole thing is going apart. Now, we're going to try to tear that out and put a temporary fix in there. This is deferred maintenance to now. I mean, really what we're talking about is trying to repair that road infrastructure, the irrigation. So what, just so for your information, what we do now is if the irrigation pops a leak, because it's just a pipe running down the road, we cap it, and it just, we don't have it the rest of the road. And there's a lot of reasons for that. But, so all of these infrastructure components are really what we're looking at from this piece, and the idea, the next step that we talked about in January was this RFQ, RFU would further refine that pricing structure. As far as how many people are, the Sunset is sold out. There are no other spaces available in that. And part of that is, how long do you hold those? And that's a question, you know, Manhattan's actually pretty lucky. We're, we're not hurting for space because of the acres out at Sunrise, but we would have to put some development into those acres eventually. Now, right now, we're, we're sitting really good. So we're talking, hopefully, after I retire, before that kind of stuff needs to happen out there.
Yep. Jared Timbly did a very good GPS study of the whole Sunset Cemetery, and there are places we could approach people who have, you know, bought them back in 1910 and see if they're still interested, or if they're even, if they even know that they, they own that.
Yeah.
My point is, we, we can't afford $10 million. I mean, because there, there are so many other things that are out there needing, needing help.
When, when will we?
Oh, I mean.
When will we do this? This is my question.
Well, we, we need to possibly look at a number that, that we feel is acceptable and see what we can do for 3 million or 4 million. But I, I can see the importance of having a better place at Sunrise for people to come, no question about it. But $1 million? I mean, I could build a house at Grand Mir for $1 million. I mean, and, and what's ever happened to Butler Buildings? I mean, and, and do we really need all these? If we're not burying many people at Sunset, do we need all the equipment at both locations? Or could we just put something on a flatbed for the one burial a year we have? I just, I feel like, I didn't want to raise the mill rate for mills. I wanted to give staff a raise, and then here, I'm talking about, it's sort of like...
I mean, yeah, Karen, you're not wrong that, I mean, $10 million is a lot. These are things that I think, I don't know if John said it too, like weighing against what are we not able to do with this?
I think we've kicked, the, the, this commission collectively, since, has kicked the can down the road for the cemetery for, for a long time. I, I, I see all of these, with maybe the exception of the columbariums, as necessary. These are not nice-to-have things. These are need-to-have things. We've got very expensive equipment parked outside that looks like it's 20 years old that we've owned for three, five years?
Five, three to five.
And so that is, is going to cost us money again. We haven't done the roads in Sunset Cemetery since the 90s. So I, I'm not against this project, and I'm not against spending the money. John, I do want us, like you said, I do want us to look very closely at bond and interest and, and where the. and, and where those things are coming from and make sure that we will be able to cover those bonds. Um, but, you know, we're talking about the dignity of people who, like you said, are going there on their worst day or going there on their final day or have been there for, for many years. You know, this is, this is probably the most historic piece of land in our city. Um, you can go through Sunset Cemetery and see the prominent folks who have, are, are resting there. Um, and it, we owe it to those people to care for it, um, as best we can. Um, so that's, you know, I, 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 I don't see why we can't pursue the historic district and look at RFPs at the same time. We can scrutinize those RFPs and we have the option to give feedback on those RFPs, do we not?
Yeah, so actually, and unfortunately, one of the things I left off there is one of the commissioners we would ask to serve on picking the design team, you would also have, um, during the design review, you would, you would get to make those decisions if we advanced beyond the RFP, RFQ. Did I answer your question?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, I'm right back where I was at the start. Um, I'm fine with doing the RFP, the RFQ. I would delay the historic district. Having said that I'm for the RFP and RFQ, I don't know where I'll be at as far as 10 million, because I do hear what Karen's saying loud and clear. And I've got a lot of, uh, concerns, but there is a lot of stuff that needs to be fixed out there. Maybe it's a scaled back project.
Um, Aaron, the columbariums, so there's roughly 600 spots at Sun, that was my quick math, at Sunrise. I just think when we come back.
There's, I, we speak in years, based on our average burial rate.
No, 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 I meant just of the columbariums. Like there's, it said there are what, like 144, and then there's four in each. When we come back, I don't need the number right now, we come back because that is such a point of contention when we do review the whole project, if that's where we get. I do think it's important to know how, how many are left in there to understand the urgency on if we're needing the columbariums and if that's being, like, how requested those are. Are we being, we're being more proactive with putting those in Sunset? So.
Yeah. It, it, there's been a desire for people, they constantly inquiring about wanting to spend their final resting place as there. That would be the only option to, to quote unquote, expand that cemetery. There's, just to be completely transparent, there's plenty of space at the existing cemetery.
Right.
And in speaking in years, there's, based on our current burial rates, there's about 240 years there, which is very, very good for municipal cemetery, because that's not usually that common.
Right.
Uh, in my previous employment, we were looking to have to expand the cemetery, expand the cemetery, expand the cemetery and acquiring land to do so. So, um, we're actually from a land standpoint in a very good spot. Now, some of that needs to be filled in and developed. Um, but the columbariums are really a response to the desire, desire of people wanting to be there, so us being more proactive and, and in a cemetery where we're not going to generate any more revenue.
Right.
To help assist with the maintenance of it.
Yep.
Um, that was, that was in the master plan. That design would come later.
Well, I was, I was.
Concept.
I mean, that's a, a question I have, I guess, if, if somebody wants to speak. I, I read through the Historic Resources Board notes, is it on the existence that, that I'm sensing a lot of difficulty that, that people aren't comfortable with those or concerned about those? Is it the location? Is it the design? Or is it just the existence at all of having columbariums in, in Sunset? Ben?
Yeah, in, in having consulted the state, it's mostly the location, um, the obscuring of what was, you know, an unblocked, um, undeveloped.
Okay.
Vista of the tower.
So not necessarily opposed to having them there?
Yeah, practically. I don't, I don't know if there's any other places that could go, uh, but that was the guy.
Yeah, that was, that was my, I had that, that similar question of like, if we don't put it in that location, is there another location we could put them in the same cemetery? Sounds like probably not.
I, I think if you were to advance this to a design stage, that would be a great question for the designer to then rectify.
So, so we, we're, we're, we're taking a bit of a risk if we advance it to a design stage with the columbariums included.
No, these are concepts. So these aren't, these aren't, if that's the feedback from the commission, they won't, then we would move ahead designing it in that, without them in that way, or trying to relocate them if that was possible.
Okay.
So part of this is you get to have that kind of feedback in the design process of if that's something that you don't want located, if that's the big hangup, there is all this other stuff that needs to be done.
Yeah.
That if that's our one hangup, because there's no disagreement on whether this is a historic district. Nobody, we're disagreeing kind of on the timing of when to apply that, but there's no disagreement that this is a historic district. It should be preserved as such. We should make that nomination. It's just whether we do that now or whether we wait till construction.
Yeah.
And, and to Commissioner Motta's point, I do think some of our concern is additional reviews creating a financial impact by delaying projects. Now, because the first project that has to happen is Sunrise, because we'll have to use the existing office at Sunset if we advance to that, so we can reconstruct, do the construction over there and get that done before we do anything at Sunset.
So that, so to me, that, that supports more of the immediate pursuit of the historic designation, because we're not even doing anything at Sunset until we finish Sunrise. Is that right?
True. Uh, if that, and I'm gonna lean, I'll say this and Ben correct me if I'm wrong. Because of that, we, if that designation was to happen between when we started and when we start to execute things in Sunset, that's where the risk, if a potential additional reviews could come in. We're not saying they'll happen, that's, it's potential, though.
Yeah, if, if a project were to, um, need the equivalent of a building permit or, you know, are about ready to break ground and the, the historic district were established on the state register, then those, uh, projects would need to be reviewed for historic compatibility. So we wouldn't stop any, again, we wouldn't stop any projects that were in progress.
Mm-hmm.
But any, any new ones that were to, to come along.
But there is also the potential for additional funding sources if it is designated. Is that?
True. That, that is limited generally to buildings. Um, again, there are few within the actual cemetery.
So it wouldn't, we, we couldn't use any type of historic preservation to preserve the roads inside the cemetery?
Occasionally, you'll get, uh, a, a grant opportunity that, that goes outside of that realm. Um, they're, they're usually, you know, thematic or, um, you know, deal with things like tran, the transportation network, for example. Um, we, we received a TA grant for the rehabilitation of Juliet Avenue. That's a good example. Um, but that wasn't offered by the State Preservation Office. That was a, um, that was the, the State Transportation Office that wanted to offer a historic component.
Um, the, um, the county got money for the windows in the courthouse. I mean, there are grants for different things, you know, and it's certainly, um, not impossible. I don't think it's probably very probable, but it seems to me that, um, marching forward with the historic preservation at this point really doesn't endanger anything that we might want to do in the future there. I'm just, I'm just not sure we can afford it. That's my whole point. Uh, I mean, I'd love to have things and, you know, and I've, I've taken a number of those cemetery tours and they're wonderful. Uh, people, people adore them and my kids used, this kind of grew, and we used to look at all the children who died up there, um, and the, the leg that's separated from the gentle one that's buried in two places. That's us. But, um, so I, I think we're just kind of regurgitating what we're saying here.
We've got two things. One is, do we want to do the RFQ and RFP? And the other is, do we want, what's our direction as far as historic? It seems like you two are historic. Us two are not.
Well, we're not voting on anything.
But we still need to kind of tell them what we want to do. And right now, we're split down the middle, Jason.
On the historic.
On the historic part.
I don't know that anyone's disagreeing with an, unless Karen is, an RFQ or RFP going out for that. Uh, when is the, sorry, in the timeline for that? I know we'll have to commit some money for them to like re-look at everything and get through design, but before we commit, when will we know a, a more firmed in number on this?
So there would be a phase one agreement that would come, that would be what you're talking about, that pre-construction phase for design services. And then we're anticipating that kind of May of '25, a 30% GMP, which would be locking in that maximum price.
But those are kind of, I think of them as like go, no-go decisions on that, like January 7th-ish is when we would see what that project would actually cost before committing to it. Maybe I'm, Jason leaned forward, so no.
May 25th. So the 30% is going to get you to a point.
Okay.
Where your contractor, who's also selected with this process, is giving you an estimate on what it's going to take to build it.
This is design-build?
Yeah. But it's also going to give you options.
Right.
And you can prioritize those options. There's been a tremendous amount of deferred maintenance at our cemeteries. And in order to keep them open and accessible to our public, we do need to make some improvements.
Yeah, and I'm not arguing.
In, in addition to obviously taking care of the facilities, uh, to, to serve that public.
So can we cherry pick if it gets to that point?
Absolutely.
Yeah.
The columbariums themselves, based on prior comments and presentations to you all, are more than likely going to pay for themselves.
Yeah.
The desired outcome of that project in Sunset is very high. And, and we could get to a structure where it doesn't cost the city or the taxpayers, the people buying those things will actually pay for them over time. So I think there's options you need to have. You need to understand what projects are out there, but you also need to have the price tags associated.
But we need to also, if there's a columbarium in Sunset, we need to have it where the historical board is happy.
Sure, absolutely. It, it needs some sensitivity.
And I will tell you, um, I just bought a columbarium and it was $1,000. So it's not at St. Paul's.
Okay, then item two is a voting item, correct?
The RFP, RFQ is the voting item.
Okay.
Well, be, before we vote, I just want to say, uh, we are not qualified to talk about historic preservation up here and we have to take the word of our experts. Um, that's why we have those committees. Uh, so that's, that's why I'm leaning with, with the Historic Resources Board on pursuing the recommendation.
Jamie, where are you at on the recommendation?
I, I'm, I'm with John. I honestly, I've, I would like to delay making any further decision until we actually decide if we are moving forward with it or not. If, if we aren't moving forward with it, I mean, right now I'm on, let's wait till it's, it's done. I mean, the cemetery's been around for a long time and we haven't moved forward yet. Um, that's where I'm at. I'm, John and I are on this, we're splitting the.
Yeah, and, and just so, to summarize for not only you all, but for the public here, um, that gives us a two-two direction this evening. Uh, further conversations I'm sure will be had with the mayor. But by not only, uh, the public, but from the staff. And if, if the mayor is ready to weigh in on that and give us direction, uh, we'll, we'll take that under consideration.
Okay.
Appreciate that.
All right.
Okay, thank you. Um, do I hear a motion? Oh, before we adjourn.
Uh, no. Uh, I move that we authorize the city administration to issue the Manhattan Cemetery's improvements, PR 2334, design-build, request for qualifications slash request for proposals, and appoint a city commissioner to serve on the selection committee.
We can appoint Susan.
Do, do we need, do we need to make that appointment?
Need to name somebody.
I'll throw my name in there. I'm prepared to be on it.
I do, but.
I mean, Peter, if you.
You want to arm wrestle for it?
We can arm wrestle, I lose. It did, it doesn't matter.
I'll do it.
Okay, Peter, you, I just picked you. With my immense power. Okay, um, do I hear a second for that?
Second.
Smitten seconded, would you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Motta?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitten?
Yes.
Mayor Proton McCullough?
Yes.
Commissioner Opel?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero.
Now, Jamie had suggested we do not meet next Tuesday. And I, uh, I don't know why I objected to that, because we don't have really, um, it's sort of make work. And I think I need more time to think about the budget and our new manager and the chamber and where we're going. So I would suggest that if that's okay with everybody.
I mean, we could use the opportunity to talk with CVB, who was on the schedule, to talk with them about, uh, metrics that evening as well.
I thought they were on the schedule later.
It's supposed to be the CVB to talk about, actually their, what, third?
Their update.
Third quarter update.
That's what we said they were going to do.
That's what they were, and then we kind of expanded it last time. I mean, I'm sticking with my comments from last time that I don't know that we're prepared to have that. I do want Danielle weighing in on that. I don't know that the entities are ready with things. I know, like I met with some of them today. I don't know that we're going to have a lot of concrete from, or anything tangible. It, it could be a discussion, but I know the chamber, chamber won't be truly discussing until their retreat, October 24th or 5th. Is that right? That's the date?
Yeah. So let's just wait on that. Is that okay?
I'm one person.
You can meet?
If John and Jamie and Karen are about moving that, we can move it off and reschedule.
Is that okay?
Yep.
Yep.
Sure.
We'll do that. Thank you all.
Okay, now, we are adjourned.
I move we adjourn the October 1st, 2024 city commission meeting.
Clerk, would you call the roll?
Commissioner Mitten?
Yes.
Mayor Proton McCullough?
Yes.
Commissioner Opel?
Yes.
Commissioner Motta?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero.